All right, well, I want to welcome everyone to the February 18th, 2020 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Before we begin with our first case, I want to go around the room and have people introduce themselves. We'll start with you, Kevin.
Kevin Bassett, alternate.
Raylene Shiffey Rice.
Teresa Bascom, vice chair, acting chair this evening.
Terry Bonja.
Peter White.
And Kevin Bassett will be seated tonight as Bonnie is out. So before, Roscoe, before we have you go, I want to just go over the order of business for the public hearings. Bonnie has been doing this, and I think it's very helpful for people who have not been to a meeting before to know how things work. Members of the board may ask questions at any point during testimony. Each person who appears shall be required to state their name and address and indicate their affiliation to the case. And I'm going to ask everyone, and as you come to the table, please be seated, then speak as close as you can into the microphone without obviously swallowing it, don't want you doing that. But the sound system is not all that great, so I do need to have you be next to the microphone so that the recording can take place, and I thank you for that. Any member of the board through the chairperson may request any party to the case to speak a second time. Any party to the case who wants to ask a question of another party to the case must do so through the chairperson. So I don't want any talking between people out there. You need to address your questions and your concerns through the chair, and then I will speak to the people for you. The applicant shall be called to present their case first, then those abutters in favor shall be allowed to speak. Those abutters in opposition shall then be allowed to speak. The board will hear any evidence that pertains to the case from other parties that wish to speak, so it must be related strictly to the case. The applicant and those in favor shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. Those in opposition will also be allowed to speak in rebuttal. The chairperson shall present a summary set forth of the findings, and an opportunity will be given for correction of our misunderstanding or anybody else's misunderstanding. The hearing will be closed, and the board may vote to approve or disapprove the application immediately after the close of the hearing, or wait until members can prepare their statements of reasons for their vote. Any questions from anybody? Okay. The first case then is case 20-002-VA. It's an application from Brooke Schaefer for a variance request from Article 2(c)(1a) of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit construction of a home on a lot with 107 feet of frontage on a private drive where 200 feet of frontage on a Class 5 road or better is required by the ordinance. The property is located on Lamprey Drive in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 70, Lot 22. Mr. Blaisdell, you-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I need to excuse myself, as I am a neighbor to this case.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll have you take a seat out there, please.
Whereabouts are you? Across the road, left, right? How much of a neighbor are you?
I own Lamprey Road.
Oh, good.
So you stated that the Schaefers are not here?
I don't see her. The weather probably slowed her down. She was standing.
All right, and we have something that states that you are able to speak on her behalf?
Um, yes.
Yes. It's not checked off, but your name is written on here.
Yes. Yeah, we've been working on this project for the last one or two years.
Okay. Then go ahead and present the case.
Okay, well, she bought this lot like last fall, and she wants to build a house on it. And since it's on a non-town meaning paved road, I just may have heard that she'd have to give an earrings for that. Plus, we need an approved septic design.
Turn the microphone toward you, please.
How does that sound? So I've done a septic design. I've got a shoreline plan for the state, plus we're using this for tonight to present this. So I can get everything to fit here and make state, meet all the state requirements, though we just need to get a variance to be able to, you know, put a house on this road. It already has quite a few houses on it already. I couldn't tell you how many, but this is just one of the formalities we need to do. It's a pretty flat lot. It's all wooded, and she won't be doing anything the first 50 feet from the lake back.
Are you-
I'm so sorry. That one's go.
Yes.
I'm a little late. This is Brooke Schaefer.
Yeah, she's here.
I apologize for being late.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could you please state your name into the-
Yes, I'm Brooke Schaefer.
Okay, thank you.
And I did want to note that on the letter that I got sent, my name was spelled incorrectly, just in case there's any corrections that need to be made. It was S.C.H.A.E.F.E.R. There's a C in there. Just put it right.
S.C.H.?
S.C.H., yes. A.E.F.E.R. Thank you.
S.C.H.A.F.E.R.
S.C.H.A.E.F.E.R.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep. Just wanted to correct here. And it is correct on your paperwork here, so that's, that's good.
Great.
Thank you. All right, would you go through the five criteria, please?
Okay. Um, the variance would not be contrary to public interest because many other lots in town have a similar situation. Patacui Lake is a lot of roads like this. And the spirit of the ordinance is served because sometimes rules cannot be met for reasonable use of property. And substantial justice is done because the owners will be able to get full use of their lot. And the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because it's, this is just like all the neighbors. It's just, you know, a lot with a house on it. And literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. A, for purpose of subparagraph, unnecessary hardship means that owing a special condition of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and specific application of this provision to the property. And my answer is, this is a similar situation for many other lots in Nottingham. And the proposed use is a reasonable one because this will allow the owner to get full use of the property. And if the criteria of subparagraph A is not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist, and only if owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with ordinance, and a variance is necessary, therefore necessary, to enable use of it. And there's just no other way to access the lot. It's, um, it's a mile from a town-maintained road, so.
Okay. I want to remind everyone, the variance before us is for the, is to permit construction of a home on a lot with 107 feet of road frontage where 200 feet is required on a Class 5 or better road. So we aren't to look at anything other than that fact that road frontage is the issue here. Okay? All right. Does anybody from the board have any questions?
I had one just about the lot number. I'm trying to find lot, is it Lot 22?
Lot 22, map 70.
I'm trying to find Lot 22 on the map you just gave me.
That's a difference. It's Tax Map Lotting System and Plan Lotting System are not the same.
So do you have some neighborhood map that shows your lot, Lot 22?
Well, that's it. It's C-13.
Right, I see it on the D, but usually you have a map, you know, of the town. Every lot in town is on a map. So do you have a copy of your lot? I just want to see how it relates to the other properties. And I drove through there, and I couldn't make it out.
If you wanted to match the number of my plan, you'd have to look at the tax map. So, so for the, you want to look at a tax map? I might-
Just my question, where is Lot 22?
Roscoe, this is-
I put a little asterisk next to it.
There's one on here that's labeled Lot 13.
Yeah, but that's the one goes by the D, 13.
Okay. So that is the lot. And so the tax map, you know, the tax maps were made more recently. This is dozens of years old, different. But that is the lot.
The deed refers to 13.
That is the lot.
All right, well, that clarifies that.
Do you have any other questions, Peter?
I just have a general question. You know, when you bought the slot, you assumed it was going to be a house lot. You paid over $200,000 for it. So my, my question is, if all these lots are being marketed that way, then everybody who comes before us that buys one for that price is going to be an automatic hardship. I mean, once you spend $200,000 for a lot, you expect to be able to build a house on it. Even if every one of these lots had a house on it, you're going to be a very, very crowded neighborhood because these are just quarter acre and half acre lots. So, you know, once again, you know, we could probably squeeze a few more in it, but that's why I recommend driving through these neighborhoods to see how these lots are being developed to make sure they're not becoming too crowded. Because originally, these were meant to be camp lots, not year-round homes. So the change, you know, they've been changed over the last few years.
We have a lot more strict requirements today than they did when all the neighbors housed. So this one will meet the setbacks better. It'll have a flashy new septic, and it's, and it won't make a problem with the neighbors' lots. It will meet setbacks away from their well. So, um, so this, you know, will be a better situation.
It, this is a brand-new lot, no houses yet on it. May I ask why it's with 107 feet of frontage versus the 200?
The lot was created 40 or 50 years ago. There was no zoning back then.
Okay, so I was under the impression it was a new lot.
No, no, no. This is a, a lot that's been around forever. And what probably happened, sometimes people buy two lots for protection, then when they time to move, they, they sell their second one. I'm not sure what the situation was here, but-
Okay. No, I just thought it was a newly-created lot. I apologize for that-
Yeah.
-misunderstanding on my part. Does anybody else have a question?
Is, is this a year-round residence or a seasonal residence?
Yes, year-round.
Year-round residence. I had a second question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just trying to figure out why. Oh, the, I didn't see this, and it may be very obvious. The height of the house was, is this a single story or a-
It's two stories.
And is it consistent with what's in the area? I did not get out there to drive around there today.
It won't be a McMansion, you know, because the lots only, we can't put a five, a six-bedroom house on there. So the, the state says-
So three-bedroom.
... square feet of certain type, so, so this would be a three-bedroom house. Yeah, it'll be kind of a typical of the area. Not a lot bigger, not a lot smaller, just average-sized house.
Okay, not a three-story or two-and-a-half or, okay.
And I caution again that our concern is the-
I'm sorry.
I want to caution again that our concern is the less than 200 feet of road frontage.
The septic's a bit, the-
200 feet of road frontage for the house.
Right, the first 107, right.
Terry, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right. Could I have you go back to your seats, and then anybody who would like to speak for the case, please come to the table and state your name and where you live?
I own the house adjacent, which if you refer to the map that you're looking at, I'm Lot 12, and the proposed house is going on Lot 13. At least, when I bought the house 40 years, when I bought the land 40 years ago, those were the numbers. Each lot had 100-foot on Lamprey Drive. That lot, back then, as far as I knew, had a 60-foot waterfrontage along with the, next to it was a 60-foot water, but both lots had 100-foot on Lamprey Drive. Okay? The, the, one of the things that I, I just don't understand here is that it says 107 feet frontage on a private road. It's, uh, it's Lamprey Drive, and right now, it's Class 5 road, so, that I didn't understand. So I was kind of concerned why we're looking at two different, two different things here, okay? But Lot 13 is the lot from what you're looking at, okay? And I believe if you look at it, it's, it's got like 100 plus or minus, uh, frontage on Lamprey Drive.
Lamprey Drive is a private road, according to the town. It's not, it's not a Class 5 road.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin owns it.
Okay? Uh, but that was, that was my, you know, my concern, because when I saw that initial map that the real estate agent showed everybody, it was like 200-foot frontage, and they're going to pay taxes on 200 feet. It's not 200 feet. It's, it's only 100 foot, 100 plus or minus, but it's only 100 foot.
Right, it's 107.4.
Okay. But, but the, the, I don't know, whether it was a tax map or some map, but the map that, that showed all the different lots recently that I saw showed it was over 200. And I believe she was, you know, concerned about that as well, and it's, it's not 200. In her, in her defense, it's not 200.
If she wa, if it was, she wouldn't be here. We wouldn't have to have her here.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, as far as, you know, the-
Oh, except for the private road issue, yes.
What I don't understand, I guess, is the difference between those two maps.
That I can't-
That map shows it as Lot 22, and the map you're referring to shows it as Lot 13, which was when I bought my property 50 years ago, back in 70, 40 years ago, '73, '72, it was Lot 12, and Lot 13 was next to me. So I'm not sure where this-
It's apples and oranges. Tax maps do not maps all of the survey.
Let, excuse me, for, Roscoe, let me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Our land use clerk is here. Would you like to address this at all, Joanna?
Yes. So I brought the concern to the assessing department, and the assessing department is reaching out to our mapmaker. It's not going to be taken care of immediately. Errors like that take sometimes a year because they only get updated every so often. But it has been noted, and it is in the file to be changed once they can get that taken care of.
So it has been, it has been addressed, and it's not-
Yes, and this is an issue all over town and every town around us. Tax maps are not 100% accurate. You can't go by them. You can go by your survey plans, and you can go by your deed.
Yeah, that's, you know, I've been just trying to be fair to her.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that.
Well, it wasn't 200 feet, in all honesty. It was only 100 going back.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's very good to be, it's good to bring those kind of things to the town's attention, even, so that we can make the, make the edits as necessary.
You're a good neighbor.
Yes.
That was the only point I was trying to make.
So, Mr. Bernard, you don't mind seeing the development in the neighborhood? You know, there's going to be some more houses coming in and-
No, I mean, as long as they, you know, they meet the setbacks and stuff like that, I have no problem. I like that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this, this case? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this case? Seeing none, I'll invite the applicant and Mr. Blaisdell back to the table. Thank you.
Back in the hot seat.
Back in the hot seat. Thank you. Any other questions, board members? No? All right, entertain a motion. One way or to other, please. So right now, the, the case before us is for a variance request from Article 2(c)(1a) of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit construction of a home on a lot with 107.4 feet of frontage on a private road where 200 feet of frontage on a Class 5 road is the And call the hearing closed and ask for the board's preference here.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance for case 20-002, the application from Brooke Schaefer for a variance from Article 2(c)(1a) of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a home on a lot with 107 feet of frontage on a private road where 200 feet of frontage on a Class 5 road is required. The property is located on Lamprey Drive in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and identified as Tax Map 70, Lot 22, also shown on the plan as Lot 13.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is a motion and a second? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, four. All those opposed? The motion has carried. And Joanna, we have the full board still, right? With this, with-
Yes.
Okay. So we've had a full board. There is a 45-day appeal, so your variance has been approved, but we asked that you consider proceeding with caution because of that 45-day appeal. Anybody can go forward on that, okay?
It's going to take us 45 days to get the shoreline permit, so it'll fall in place.
Get the state.
Just need to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm really spring.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Our second case is case 20-003-VA, application from Thomas and Andrea Kingston for a variance request from Article 2(c)(1a), if it feels like a deja vu, that's it, of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a home on a lot with frontage on a private road where 200 feet of frontage on a Class 5 road is required. The property is located on Whites Grove Road in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 63, Lot 48. And it looks as though we have the applicant and Mr. Blaisdell yet to come.
Yes, yes.
Keeping you busy here this evening. Peter, is there something you need to step away on?
Well, my cousin was a previous owner, so I'm not sure if that would be a conflict or not. At this point, I don't really have a difference of opinion on that.
A conflict of interest would be in place if you had any kind of interest in the property, financial or otherwise. If it does not impact you financially or in any other way gain you anything, then there is no conflict.
I will say, as, you know, if people feel more comfortable, I live on that road, so I can step down, but like I said-
I feel you can be honest about it.
Any applicant, do you have any issues with it?
No.
All right. You're still in the hot seat then, Peter.
No, he's on the hot seat.
Well, true, and, yes. All right, could you please present the case?
Okay. We have a lot on Whites Grove Road, which is not town-maintained, just like the previous one. It has plenty of frontage, but it's just not on a town-maintained road. It's on Patacui Lake, and it has a camp on it that's getting kind of tired, and he'd like to put a year-round house on it. So I've done a septic design and a shoreline, a plan, and we're just here to get a variance so he can, um, build his dream house.
Okay. Would you please go through the five criteria?
The variance would not be contrary to public interest because many lots, many other lots in town have a similar situation. And the spirit of the ordinance is observed because sometimes rules cannot be met for reasonable use of a property. And substantial justice will be done so that the owners will be able to get full use of their lot. And the values of the surrounding properties are not diminished because this is just similar to all the neighbors that are there right now. And literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. A, for purpose of this subparagraph, unnecessary hardship means that owing to a special condition of the property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and specific application of that provision to the property. And this is a similar situation for many other lots in Nottingham. And the proposed use is a reasonable one because this will allow the owners to get full use of the property. And B, if the criteria in subparagraph A is not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is thereby necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. And my answer is, there's no other way to access this lot, so we need the variance.
Do you, do you have these mimeographed copies in your office?
They, they are exact, it's apples and apples.
I look at you going, hmm.
Yeah, apples and apples.
Before we continue, I have one quick question for Joanna. I just realized that we did not vote by criteria on that last case. Can I pull, quickly poll the members to see how they would vote on it? Or is it done and done, and just check with legal on that or staff?
It's done and done because the applicant is gone.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. It wouldn't be fair to the applicant, although Roscoe is here.
She's, lets me represent her for this. I don't feel there's going to be-
I know there is, I don't-
-bad, but the law is the law, too, so.
But, but we have been voting on criteria, and forgive me for this. I'm not usually the chair, I'm the vice chair, and I spaced on the fact that we were doing something different.
Yeah. Um-
We don't want to come back.
What's that?
We don't want to have to come back again.
No, I don't blame you for that.
You're supposed to keep me in check, Terry.
I think legally speaking, our intentions were pretty clear.
That's what I was, why I was saying, it's done and done.
And if, if this was a new board, you guys could have voted to not be doing it by criteria because that is acceptable as well. But as a board, I guess I voted to do.
Is there a-
I'm going to make note in here that it was discussed, and you all agree that everything passed?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm going to make that note, and it's not like you're doing it on an actual book, but the notice comment.
Okay, thank you. So we will be-
Voting.
Voting by the five criteria, just so you're aware, which are the questions that Roscoe just went over with you, excuse me, Mr. Blaisdell just went over. So it will be a different way of voting, but it was, because that's the way it should have been with the first case, okay? I apologize for missing that. All right, so thank you for going over those. Board members, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Do you have to remove any trees?
We're not to touch these trees within 50 feet of the lake. We don't need to. It's already developed lot, most of the tree, so some trees will be cut, which we can, but this is way back from the lake, yeah.
And I noticed in the permit denial that the applicant agrees to acquire approved septic, so you've mentioned that, and shoreline permit will need to be done as well?
Definitely, yeah.
And what about-
It goes nowhere if I don't get that anyway.
Correct, I know. Just stating for the record. The well, any changes at all in that?
Uh, right now, the water comes off the lake, so it's supposed to be added.
Okay.
Now it's on the plan here.
Yes.
All right. You will be adding a well?
Yes.
I saw the, the well on there.
Yep.
Kevin?
Um, the new square footage will be?
We're not creating- We're not creating subdivision. Right now, it's three quarters of acre.
New square footage. Square footage of the home?
The resident.
Oh, the house. I think it's 2,600 square feet.
How many?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six hundred square feet?
Yeah.
And going to this, existing is...
Spasible grade.
Existing is 2,100. You're going from two to three bedrooms?
No. Existing is three bedrooms. Other than the bedroom on the side.
Okay, just for...
I'm sorry.
Just for clarity, the tax card says two. And one bath, is that also true?
Yes.
Could, when you respond, could you speak up so that the board members can hear you, please? Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, you said you are going, it has three bedrooms currently, and you're going to...
The new would be three bedrooms.
There was three as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's three to three, right?
It was two bedrooms.
He says there's currently three.
Part of the porch was renovated to become a bedroom, so it's two bedrooms upstairs.
Okay.
Second story.
Didn't tax them on it. I'm just kinda...
Good lucky guy. All right. Any other questions?
Oh, a year-round residence?
Yes.
Is it currently?
No.
Okay.
It's a camp.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It is stated that sagging floors throughout, roof needs work.
It's a tire.
And that just backs up the status of the house as it is now.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have you go to the cold seats.
It says adjustment condition on shed. Adjust condition on shed. Could you clarify that? This is on the existing...
The status of the shed?
Yeah.
I...
And... I think that must mean there was one, and maybe they're gonna adjust it to get rid of the shed. That might be...
I didn't, have you ever seen a shed then? No, I think there might have been one previous.
I'm just, I'm just pointing to this.
Yeah.
This here.
Yeah, it wasn't very well here.
Okay, understood. I didn't see it here, and...
It was in that house across the road, but I kinda caved, and I don't know if you're up to delivering.
All right. Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone in favor? All right. Anyone opposed? All right. See, now you're making that to the table.
I'm in favor.
Yes. Quite, I would say. Anybody have any further questions?
Please.
For the applicant or his builder? Nope. Okay. So, it's Case 20-30, excuse me, -003-VA, application from Thomas and Andrea Kingston for a variance from Article 2 C 1A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a home on a lot with frontage on a private road where 200 feet of frontage on a Class 5 road is the requirement. The property is located on Whites Grove Road in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 63, Lot 48. No further questions? Shall we vote on the five criteria? And then if you have a motion?
Do we need a motion?
So, move.
Excuse me. Pardon me?
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion.
Okay. Are we gonna vote on the five?
We will vote on the five.
Yeah, we'll do our motion first.
We have to have a motion first. I move that application from Thomas and Andrea Kingston. Do you want me to repeat the whole thing?
You have to, by law, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I move application, to approve, application from Thomas and Andrea Kingston for a variance request from Article 2 C 1A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a home on a lot with frontage on a private road where 200 feet of frontage on a Class 5 road is required. The property is located on Whites Grove Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as Tax Map 63, Lot 48.
The motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion and a second. Let's go by the five criteria, please. The first of the five criteria is the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. All those who feel that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, should we support this, please raise your right hand. Okay, Joanna? And two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Should we approve this application? The spirit of the ordinance would be approved. All those who agree with that statement? Three, substantial justice is done. If you feel that substantial justice is done with us approving this application, please raise your right hand. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. If you agree with that, please raise your hand. Five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. For A, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision on the property. If you agree with 5A1, please raise your right hand.
I do. Just for clarity, the application is for a home to be built. This is actually a replacement home.
A replacement.
Just for clarity.
Yes. Thank you. And two, this proposed use is a reasonable one. All those who agree? Okay. So, we've agreed, Joanna. Am I correct that 5B does not need to be voted on if 5A passes, correct? All right. Thank you so much. So, your variance request has been approved. Again, there is a 45-day grace period. If anybody can go to the office and file an appeal. All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hearing's...
Here's your drawing from that last round.
Did I close the hearing, Joanna? I did, right? I did close that hearing, right?
No, you didn't.
Okay. I am now.
I didn't hear your question.
I was asking Joanna if I remembered to close the hearing.
Oh.
Too many things to remember. How does Bonnie do it?
Need a list.
Checklist. Okay, to continue, we have a third case this evening. It is Case 20-004-VA, application from John Moran for a variance request from Article 2 C 3A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the placement of a new septic system 10 feet from the rear property line where 20 feet is required. The property is located at 23 Cove Road in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 68, Lot 78. Hello, Mr. Moran.
I'm the attorney on John Moran, 23 Cove Road.
Would you please present your case?
So, the reason why we are here tonight is the fact, I'll tell you a quick simple story, and I'll make this probably a little clearer. Me and my wife purchased our home back in 2004, at 23 Cove Road. During our purchasing of the home, the older system wasn't up to stuff, so the homeowner had to re-put a new septic system. Which he did. And they were up to science, and they made their own markers, but no one surveyed the property. So, as usual, when my neighbor purchased the property next door and had it surveyed, we found that half of my septic, the neutral, is on somebody else's property, which isn't very good. Nobody wants that. So, and I've got a plan, what was signed. So, this plan here, actually, that you see past the state of New Hampshire, this old one, 104, state signed off on it, town signed off on it, the building inspector signed off on it, whoever planned, so nobody did their due justice. And I'm the one taking the hit for it because, obviously, I need to move this to make it right, you know, because I can't sell a house or anything when it's not on my property. That doesn't do anybody any good, and it hits my neighbor from doing anything with his property, so we have to move it. So, because of the location of my property, the size of my property, the setbacks that you're seeing are 10 feet. 10 feet is the state reg, is the state's, it's not non-ans, but it does meet state standards.
Right, right.
So, that's why I'm here for the variance tonight, because the fact that if you don't move the 20 feet, anywhere I put my prop, anywhere I put this system, I am gonna be sitting in front of you, just because my house is square, it's packed, right in the middle of the property. So, when you see that map, there really isn't anywhere that you can possibly put it. And obviously, we're not putting it in my driveway, front area, because that's closer to the lake, so we obviously want to keep it out to the back, but I would be, if I put it there, I'd still be going for another variance because I wouldn't be 20-foot setbacks there. Plus, the front of the house would be an exuberant cost. Over the $15,000 cost of putting the thing in now, it doesn't pay any interest, so that's even more of a hardship against me. So, that's why I'm here to make the 10-foot variance.
All right. Thank you. Would you please go through the five criteria?
You had 10 foot from the rear, but what about the sideline? You don't, you're not 10, you're closer than 20 to the sideline, right? I assume...
As Mr. Landry, who drew this all up and did mark it, by the way, on the plan, where you see 16-foot oak tree?
Yeah.
That tree is no longer there. My neighbor had it down and put solar lights on his house, solar power.
I'm sorry, the neighbor what?
My neighbor took it down so that he could put solar on his house.
Oh.
So, just to note, that's not, because he had a time to draw in plan. But, yeah, you can see where his marks, where my setbacks, you know, are 10 feet.
Right. I just wanted to make sure, you know, we gave you the setback on the sideline too, right? Because the 10-foot, I can see his 10-foot state line comes right, it's not very far from that one corner of the field, right? By the 16-inch oak.
Will we need to flip to the backside of my lot?
Well, on the sideline.
You mean towards the oak, the oak tree?
Yeah, towards the one where the, comes up in the road, that sideline.
Yeah, where it says 10-foot state setback, where it says on the side, going down to the oak.
Right, right. But you'll need, you'll need a variance on the sideline too, right?
No, that is, that's the same, it's a different...
Okay. No, it only says on here, the rear.
Oh, yes, you're right here, I need it.
Rear and side, you need rear and side.
I need it everywhere.
My neighbor, excuse me, my neighbor wouldn't be able to deed you a little bit of land where your septic is.
I know, we actually went through the process, and this is the best outcome for everybody is just to have it. Because deed it or giving something over just reduces the size of his lot, which makes him more unsettled, so that doesn't, we're gonna make his lot more noninformed if I took land off him, so that would be, it doesn't benefit anybody from doing it that way.
Oh, that's...
Kinda looked at for a little, but, you know, on the smaller lots like this, you can't give up anything because you're already basically...
No.
The lot next to you is vacant.
Correct.
Is it sold?
Uh, no. Is it? I own it right now. It's the most...
Oh, okay. The reason...
No, it hasn't even met its five criteria yet. I'm waiting for people to stop asking questions.
The reason I ask is that it's, and the vacant lot in back?
Oh, you mean what's behind me?
Yes.
Yeah, that is actually all part of the Cahill Trust where that...
Okay, that's, so there won't be buildings back there?
No, and there's actually a power line that's actually out back where it says poorly drained soils.
Right.
There's actually a power line through the road that go through there, so that's not a building.
So, the septic system is 10 feet from the back?
From my property line, correct.
From your property line?
My property line.
Poorly drained soil?
Is 75 feet away.
Oh.
Better than, yeah. A little further than 75, probably 80 feet.
Oh, there it is. Okay, I see it. Yeah, all right. And then it's 10 feet from the adjacent property on the side?
Correct. So, 10 feet from Mr. Parkett's land, which if you were looking directly at my house, would be on the left, and obviously, you saw 10, and then my beer is the Cahill Trust chartering, because that is...
I mean, I went over, looked at John's lot in the fall, and he has no choice. I'm, it's amazing he got this to fit where you did fit it.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's tight.
All right. Before, there's another question. Please review the five criteria with us in your responses.
Number one, the variance would not be contrary to...
Bless you.
Contrary to public, because obviously, I need an improved septic system to make it, living in my house, and to put a mortgage on it. And the fact that we are fixing a problem that was done by previous owners not to, you know, I'm not the one who put it in, so we're actually, you know, making it better for everybody because now that all the systems will be on there, you know, my property. Spirit of it is deserved, yes, it's a system, my house is on the wall, so it's kind of a...
Always an out house.
You know, maybe why. You know, again, fixing the problem, you know, with my existing system being on neighboring properties, again, which is, you know, not looked upon.
Mm-hmm.
Well, this substantial justice done, if you do grant it, yes, it will be. The value of certain properties will not be diminished, no, because it's a two-bed septic, just like everybody else's.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be the same as what they see. I appreciate it. And five, literal enforcement of the provisions, the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, yeah, from denied, and I obviously went on some problems with my mortgage and my house and everything like that. But due to the size of my lot, this is the only placement to put the existing system, you know, plus existed, I don't know, my progress I wrote, the purpose use is a reasonable one, there's no place to put it, so I'm kinda stuck.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Moran? Kevin, Raylene, anything?
Not for Mr. Moran.
Okay. All right. I'll have you be back in... Anyone like to speak for this case? Please remember to state your name and your address.
Yes.
Can you get before the mic? Thank you.
My name is Rick Morrissey. I live at 41 Lakeview Drive. However, I'm also the abbotter to Mr. Moran.
Okay.
And unfortunately, we're into this occurrence where we have to solve a problem on both sides. I'm here tonight to speak for him, but I have just one concern that I want to bring up in a few minutes. But this has been ongoing for a while, it's cost both of us a deal of money to resolve this issue, so it's been great. It's been injuring both sides, and we came to a resolution that we can fix it, and we're just asking the town to help us out. Okay, that's all, that's all this is about.
Okay.
All right. And obviously, I'm withheld working on my property to build, because I wanted to resolve this issue. So, we're just about there, and nevertheless, by these issuances of the 10-feet setbacks, how effect would it have on my building in the future? Because I'll be back here also. And I'm, I'm not asking exactly for reciprocity, but I mean, if I can work with the board to help me resolve my issues now that I'm helping the neighbor resolve his issues, if we could go forward in that kind of direction. And hopefully, that if I have an issue with them, they'll reciprocate with me if I have a lot line run within 15 feet or something else. And I, because I had a test bit done, they tested already, but I don't know how that would affect the, the twenty feet from the lot line or whatever, just as the same thing that John has, the issue.
Well, what I can say to you, sir, is that every case that comes before the board is considered on its own merits, number one. So there, there is no grandfathering or history or whatever that's necessarily looked at.
I just wanted to say, just say, verbalize it to give you an idea of what we're all going through.
Right, and, and I, and I appreciate all of that, but I just wanted to also mention to you that a lot of what happens depends on what the ordinance is at the time you come. There may be a change to it before you even are able to build or looking to build, that may make it so you don't have to come, I don't know at this point. So, just have to look and wait and see what the ordinance says when you go before the building inspector, asking for, um, your opportunity to build, and then would go from there. So the same courtesy that we give to Mr. Moran tonight will be extended to you to present your case, have people speak for and, or against, and then a decision will be made based on, on what we hear that evening.
Well, as you can see, time is of the, because things are changing rapidly as we speak, and if I need delaying two years to build on my property to resolve this issue, certainly, my timeframe is sensitive also. So I just want to, you know, we're all trying to fix a problem that we really didn't develop ourselves.
Right.
It's a non-conforming lot issue.
Mm-hmm.
We've been dealing with, I'm sure, before me.
And long after us, I'm sure.
The two people in front of me said the same thing.
Yes.
And I have a seventy-five foot lot, road piece by two hundred, that, that lot. So that's non-conforming also, and the same issue, I'll bring it back to you at that point in time. So I'm just verbalizing what we're going through, and I hope, down the road, you might have some. You'll understand why we're out here today. The one question I had is when, uh, can I ask John a question?
No, you have to go through me.
Is there a survey on John's property?
Mr. Moran, has there been a survey on your property?
Of course, we still need to do it, that's how I got my time.
Okay, I just want, because I, does it match up with my survey?
Uh, did you survey, you surveyed your?
Yes.
It matches you, it matches your points of reference.
Okay, because I was looking at your, your, a small version of your, uh, plot. And it wasn't showing reference points on it, unless you have a more detailed model. But the term approximate lot line, more, just worried me a little, because the reason we're here today is somebody wrote out a septic system plan, and said it'd be approximately five feet from the lot.
Right.
And in reality, it's fifteen feet over the lot in portions. So, well, I need somebody to make sure that we're all in the right spot.
That's your marker.
Okay. Okay, this is more detailed than.
That's your marker.
Okay.
That's your marker.
So that's, that's a survey?
That's my post, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's what I, that's what I wanted to know.
There's a file survey that, uh, Mr. Landry did for me.
So we just wanted to make sure they were on the same page, with this is where it is, you know, is ten feet is from, ten feet from the lot line that we pulled out?
And that will be also looked at through the building inspector and the state with the septic, correct? Am I correct?
Oh.
Making sure that the septic goes within the ten foot boundary line that is.
When you can go up to his side.
Yeah, he checks.
So this will be, that's, that's just.
Yes.
The lots to mash up with a post are.
Yes.
If he's using my post as reference, then that's, that's fine by me.
Okay.
They need the same, at the same lot, lot line.
Correct.
Okay.
That will be taken care of.
That was my only really concern, like I say, regarding me. Sort of an agree, I have an agreement to fix the problem, and I appreciate your time.
You are very welcome, thank you for your time. Mr. Moran, you may come back to the table. Does anybody else have a question? Kevin?
Um, the existing leach field tank, et cetera, that is not on your property, um, what will happen to that during the, during the construction of your new septic?
Uh, and what's on my property will be all taken care of.
What happens to the, the material or, or whatever is on your butter's property?
The resolution to the agreement, rather than going any further, was that we would take the, we would handle the removal of the prior septic system.
Okay.
Okay, that, that is stated, and I just wanted to be clear, but it's also stated the opposite way. What I'm looking at is this comment here, Mr. Moran. It says, "Existing EDA tank to be abandoned," that's what was just stated. It goes on to say that the owner reports existing EDA must be removed from a butter's properties. And that just sounds in conflict.
That's what I just said to you, Kevin.
No, the first statement was, was, was stated, "Existing EDA tank to be abandoned." I, I believe you both agreed to that. The last sentence.
Again, could also mean by not being used.
Agreed, agreed.
So, you know, that's the fact that the line would be there, the tank.
Okay, how do you interpret the last sentence? Owner reports existing EDA must be removed from a butter's properties.
That will, like you said, it'll be removed, from the butter's property.
But it's being abandoned.
Abandoned and removed?
Abandoned and removed.
Abandoned means it's not going to be in use by, I'm putting out all assistance.
I understand, I, I get that, as long as, as long as both of you agree that it is going to be abandoned, which is in the top type.
Yeah.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Okay. Anybody?
Oh, oh, excuse me. We may want to suggest, at the appropriate time, to say that, um, in the application, order to permit a placement of new septic from ten feet from the rear property line, we may want to add, um, as noted earlier, the side property line. Yeah, we'll put that.
How would that be handled? When would that be done?
During the motion.
During the motion.
Any, any further questions? Peter, anything? Raylene?
I'll say.
Carrie?
No, I'm gross.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Joanna? Case two zero dash zero zero four dash V A, application from John Moran for variance request from Article two C, it says three A, but it's actually two, is it not, Joanna? Two C?
No, it's noted in the building inspector's.
Oh, the, the new, the new, okay. According to the new, the proposed thing.
Correct.
Okay, so Article two C three A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance, to permit the placement of a new septic system, ten feet from the rear property line where twenty feet is required. The property is located at twenty-three Cove Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map sixty-eight lot seventy-eight. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion for, to approve case twenty dash zero zero four dash V A, application from John Moran for variance request from Article two C three A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance, to permit the placement of a new septic system, ten feet from the rear and side property lines, whereas twenty feet is required. The property is located on twenty-three Cove Road in Nottingham, and identified as tax map sixty-eight lot seventy-eight.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Raylene. All right, let's go over the criteria to vote. Okay, number one, the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. All those who agree that approving this is not contrary to the public interest, please raise your right hand. All right. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. All those who agree that approving this would uphold the spirit of the ordinance, please raise your right hand.
Mm-hmm.
Man on us. Substantial, excuse me, substantial justice is done by approving this, please raise your right hand. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. If you agree with that, please raise your right hand. And five A, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. If you agree with that, please raise your right hand. All right. Mr. Moran, your variance request has been approved, again, the forty-five day period to warn you about. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
You are very welcome.
Good luck, I hope it all works out.
Okay, um, all of our public hearings are now closed, have been dealt with. Next is staff and board member updates. Does anybody have anything they want to bring forward for a staff update? Any conferences, anybody been to a conference? Raylene, I noticed you have a new book, you've been to a conference recently?
I know, this was so last year's.
Last year's, okay. Kevin?
I have not.
Okay. Peter?
I just had one comment on the, um, I was going to say, in general, when folks bring, bring things before us, if we could get like a subdivision, a plot plan or whatever, that shows their, their lot in relation to the other lots, I just find that helpful. And that first one, I, you know, very hazy on where that lot even was, and I drove out there.
It was difficult to tell from the picture that was in our thing too, the tax map card. Like, all I can see are trees and the, the lake.
So one of our issues is how it affects the butters and the surrounding neighbors' properties and property values, so it's helpful to see who else is there.
Well, and I think, though in truth, if there, the butters are concerned about how it's going to be affecting them, they'll be here or be sending a note. I mean, yes, we are to look at that, but I, truthfully, if it is a concern to the neighbor, I'm sure they'll be here. But I thank you for that request.
Is there a minimum lot size in Nottingham? Is there a two acre minimum?
No, except for the aquifer protection district, that's.
Except for what?
The aquifer protection district requires three acres.
That is correct.
Right, but all of these properties are less than two acres?
They are pre-existing, non-conforming, less than two acre.
All of them?
Yes.
The ones that you've got now, yes. And then, um, open space development can have smaller lots than two acres as well. So you've got three reasons why there would be, yeah, three different sized lots and reasons why. If it's a aquifer protection, it would be three acres or more. If it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, which most of your lake lots are, or an open space development.
So if any, and I don't know if there are any, because I haven't looked that closely, but if there are any lots, any properties larger than two acres that are not yet sold, they would have to retain the two lot size?
Yes.
The two acre?
The two acre size, right.
Yes.
The two acre size, any new properties up there that got sold?
We are not supposed to make more non-conforming lots unless they fit in that criteria that Joanna was talking about.
Like the open space development.
Yes.
So you'd see the, um, Kamala Court, or Maple Ridge, or anything, all those new developments, some of those are less than two acres, and that's because they're open space development, which means fifty percent of the blank land.
The property is open space, so they can make the lot smaller, but, because they've got the bigger space.
Correct, yeah.
Can I make just two more brief comments? Number one is that all of these little lots, quarter acre, you know, third acre lots are being sold as house lots. So this lady who came in, she was, she paid over three hundred thou, no, over two hundred thousand dollars. So they're being told by the real estate agents, oh yeah, go ahead, you'll, you'll be able to turn this into a year-round house lot. So it would be a hardship of us to deny any of them after they paid two hundred thousand dollars. But if you, my second comment, if you look at, if you remember the, the first neighborhood we were looking at, those were all quarter acre, half acre lots. Can you imagine what that neighborhood would look like if every one of those lots had a year-round house? So I, I think maybe we need to work with the planning board to develop some type of policy concerning the, you know, the non-conforming, pre-existing camp lots. And I think it's going to hurt those neighborhoods, as well as the lake itself, if, you know, every one of these camp lots get developed. And it is going to get to the point where it's going to be hurting the neighbor's property values, having houses stuffed, stuffed in between them, it's going to ruin their view, their privacy. So how do we?
I don't, I don't know how we can when they are lots of record. I don't, I don't think that we can forbade someone who has ownership of it to sell it.
You know, maybe we need to have, you know, somebody research case law, because, I have to think, a lot of these, the original purpose of these lots, and they're all over the state, were for camps. They weren't meant to be year-round lots. So once again, the, the change is being changed by the, the ZBAs and the towns. We're the ones that are approving these for year-round use, and then the selectmen are giving them a building permit. So once again, we and our policies are changing the character of these neighborhoods.
Well, Raylene brought, just brought up a good point, as a possibility.
Yeah, what did I? Did I talk over? She said restricting, restricting the use of those lots.
Yeah, is it something we could have Steph look into?
That's what I was going to say. I recommend that you send me an email or a letter, however you desire, with your concern and what your thought line is, and then I will pass them on to our planner to research. And when the z, planning board works on zoning changes, usually beginning in September, then we can see about working in a zoning change for the following March ballot.
It's too late for this here.
I have a question about that. What's the relationship between the, it sounds like to me, as a member of the zoning board, and who has considered the planning board, um, it sounds like the planning board makes decisions that I would consider zoning board decisions.
Yes, so I can answer that question. Um, so the reason that it seems that way to you is because the zoning board is a judicial, qualified judicial, um, board who enforces the zoning ordinance and variances to the zoning ordinance. The planning board is the board that promotes changes and, um, plans.
But wouldn't, and they don't talk to each other?
We do, yes.
We have a meeting, yeah, once a year at least.
Every September, and if you want more, all you got to do is ask, and I will put it forward to you.
Before they make changes?
Yes.
That, that ultimately influences the zoning board, because the zoning board is going to make decisions about them?
Correct.
Do they approach the zoning board and say, "We are making these changes in the current plan, and would just like to discuss them with you to see how are they going to be influenced when you go to look for variances?"
Actually, what happens, Raylene, is that come summertime, or September, October-ish, we start looking, not September, which is July, August-ish, we as a zoning board start looking at what our caseload has been, and then get that information. And, and I've been on both planning and zoning up until just this month. So I was passing off information as to what we've been seeing frequently here, um, at the zoning board, and asking for changes to the zoning ordinance. So then the planning board invited the zoning board, and that was further discussed.
Okay.
And at that point, they start looking at making changes to it, bring it to a warrant article verbiage, then there, a public hearing has been held on the changes for this coming year. Um, I, we, we had a few people come to that, but it was really not a whole lot of inform, of debate at all on it.
We didn't have anybody come to speak to the public hearings.
At, at that one?
Yeah.
All right. And then, so that information's now gone to the ballot, and it will be voted on in March.
We only had Bonnie show up for the, um, the joint, yeah, for the joint meeting. Actually, I don't think you were able to make that one, though.
For the changes on it? I was there.
You were? Okay. Um, so, yeah, so you guys do have an opportunity to either send in your concerns and requests for change, or to speak to the planning board directly. Um, any time, actually, if you have, you want.
Is that, is that a formalized decision, or is that depend upon who the members of the various boards are that that occurs? Or is there a process that says the planning board will meet with the zoning board, the planning board will meet? And the other thing I'm concerned about is the conservation commission?
Yeah.
Before making, is that a formal?
We have, we have a joint meeting every year in September with.
Yes, but is that dictated somewhere, or is that by whoever happens to be on it says, "Let's get together"?
The planning board says, "Let's get together," Joanna sends a formal invitation to both boards, and I get requests, um, responses back, and.
But if they decide not to do it?
But it hasn't happened yet in the seven years I've been working for the town.
And, and the conservation, there's a conservation commission rap on the planning board as well, it's Susan Rooney.
Right, yeah, no, I'm on the conservation commission, so, but it's.
And that's a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a publicly noticed, public hearing, and it's also noticed in the paper, if I remember correctly. I'm pretty sure it does. Yeah, so, um, but yeah, it is, it is, um, they're very open to hear, and they actually, even the building inspector came to it too, or sent in comments. So the planning board is very open to hearing it. The, the big concern is, is if there's too many requests for change, we have to narrow We have to narrow it down to the most important ones and the big hits, because the voters will get too overwhelmed, and.
Right.
The chances of, of not passing may not happen if they're overwhelmed. So, um, yeah, so it has to be very clear, concise, legal, and all, everything, all the changes go to legal twice for review and to make sure that we're doing everything, um, correctly.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Uh, to Peter's first comment, um, what might be helpful, and it means a little more work for you, but if you had the tax map here of the property.
Yeah.
Um, would just be sitting right there. And that, that means more work. Are you lugging it back and forth?
Oh, for the large.
Or, or something that, that you feel is, is appropriate, but.
I will do my best to either include a, a, eleven by seventeen, um, in your, eleven by seventeen or eight and a half by eleven in your packets, or bring the big, big folder down.
So, that's not, isn't that what this is? The tax card?
That's the tax card, not the tax map.
Not the tax map, so you're, okay, gotcha. All right. Joanna, do you have anything for the board?
No, actually, right now, we don't have any, um, cases coming up. When is the deadline?
Second. And our, and our minutes are up to date?
Uh, no, your minutes are not quite up to date. I have the last ones that I'll try and catch up on.
Okay.
Um, so apps are due on March, uh, second, for the March meeting, so, um, keep an eye on your, your inboxes for the meeting. As you see, there's the, what's that?
You said March.
Two.
March second is when I'll get the app in. Um, so I'll send out notices as soon as I get those done, usually within a week.
Okay.
Um, election, town election is March tenth, so keep an eye on that.
March seventeenth is Saint Patty's Day.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And that's our next meeting.
So, everybody, are you wearing green?
I'll be wearing green. Where are you going to be?
Somebody's a little early. Or you think of Saint Patty's Day early.
Yes, you do. All right, so there's nothing further for business. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, motion.
So, moved by, by Raylene. Is there a second? Second by Terry. All approve.
Aye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
I defined John's back. That was very helpful, by the way.
You're welcome.